Good morning. I'd like to welcome all of you to Commissioner's Court. It is Wednesday, December 27, 2017. The time is nine o'clock. Would you please rise for the invocation to be delivered by Gary Williamson and then join us in the pledges to the flag?
Let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity together today for the business of Grimes County. Look after these leaders of our county and guide them in whatever decisions they may make that may be the right one for our people. And dear Lord, please look after our first responders who are out there and never know what they may have come upon whenever they respond to a call. And our military personnel are fed worse for them than we would not even be here today. As true as your son, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honorable Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I'll take the liberty of making the first public announcement. Commissioner Walker is not here this morning. Her husband is going into surgery tomorrow, so she's with him for pre-op. So keep that family in your prayers, if you will, if you're so inclined to do so. And we wish him well in his surgery and speedy recovery. We do open the podium for any public comments. We look forward to hearing from you. Any public comments?
I just had one thing to say. I really appreciate everybody getting their time sheets to us in a timely manner. It really did help.
Well, Madam Treasurer, I'm sure in return they're going to appreciate getting paychecks.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm glad everybody complied on that. Thank you. Are there any other public comments? All right. We will move into the consent agenda items, number three, number four, number five, number six. Hopefully, everybody's had time to review those.
There's no further discussion. I'd like to approve, make, move to approve the consent agenda items three, four, five, and six as presented.
I second the motion.
Okay. First by Commissioner Mallett. Second by Commissioner Dobieinsky. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That will bring us to... County Treasurer, County Auditor, number seven, review and discuss purchasing policies and procedures manual, attachment seven. We had this distributed to you. It's proposed by the auditing department that we have a purchasing and policies and procedures manual. I guess because I didn't specific, or I didn't intentionally, but incorrectly worded the agenda information. So today, we're going to review and discuss. We're not going to take any action. But if we get past all of our questions and answers on that, we can put it on the next agenda to take action in regards to that.
Judge, can I make a comment on this?
You certainly may.
I've got some notes in my file on my staff before she decided to go on holiday, let's say. She reminded me that in 2007, we received a policy similar to this from the auditor's office. And I took a look at it. I think I made some notes. And then we received another proposed policy in 2012. I don't think either one of those were adopted. And the auditor's office can certainly tell me if that's incorrect. But Ms. Coleman contacted me last week, I guess it was last week, and indicated that they had put this manual together and they wanted the court to review it or they wanted to have it approved, if at all possible, before the end of the year. I don't know that there's any, I don't know that they're married to that date. I think it's just a matter of wanting to get this done rather than let it sit around and languish for a while. So I suggested that, given the length of the policy, that the members of the court needed an opportunity to have it in their hands and maybe an extended period of time to go over it either on your own or as group, page by page, to see what this says and make sure that you all are comfortable. Keep in mind, this is to be the policy of the county such that everyone has a level of expectation of how things are supposed to be procured and what you're supposed to do, who you're supposed to go to, what your expectations should be out of the auditor's office or the treasurer's office, et cetera. There's mention in here, just so I've said it, about a purchasing agent. This says this policy applies as long as there is no purchasing agent. At this point, there is not. Oftentimes, people, I think, in their brains assume that the auditor's office is the purchasing agent, but that, it's a term of art, purchasing agent found in the local government code. We used to have one when I first started working here, and I'm not sure why that changed. But effectively, you have one office that is in charge of acquisitions. And as you can imagine, and we've had this conversation, I think as a court, I certainly know that I had it with Judge Lamond. At some point, and I don't know what that threshold is, but it's almost like having an IT person who is either personnel and an employee or who's a contractor. To the degree that you can have somebody that you can control and have them in-house, it's a better idea. Can you get that for the amount that we're putting out there? Well, we were trying to find that out. We had to go to the market to figure that out. If you have a purchasing agent, which is one department that's in charge of the purchasing, that person could potentially be in charge of all pencils across the county versus every office is buying whatever pencils they want. Well, then you can use the buying power, leverage the buying power of the county so that one office is acquiring, you know, a gross of pencils and then you go to their office to get your pencils. I mean, that's the kind of idea. I don't think that's necessarily what is being had or being discussed here, although I'll let Ms. Coleman explain that if y'all want to ask her and she wants to respond. But to me, that's kind of the idea is obviously you want to have something that sets forth what the expectations of all parties are within the county about how acquisitions are going to take place. It's been really a de facto matter, I think, that if you went out or were going out for bids, you just knew you talked to the auditor's office and they were going to handle the bid packet and the publication. So that's what I wanted to say to you because that's what I'm aware of at this point. I did a cursor review. I have not gone through it page by page. Wanted to be sure that we all did that. There was a time, as I suggested to Ms. Coleman, that, and I should say Mrs. Coleman, I guess, but...
It's whatever.
Yeah. Makes you seem older. You're not old. Anyway, there was a time we were going over subdivision regulations. Shoot, I don't remember when it was, but late 2000s, maybe. And, you know, they're 50 pages long with multiple attachments. And I wanted to be sure that all of the members of the court had an opportunity to see them page by page. And if we had to sit here for a couple of hours and do it, well, so be it. I mean, and I don't mean to be crass or ugly, but that's your job. And I would think that you'd want to do that and see it page by page. To have this put before you on, you know, over the break and you potentially have a day or two or three or whatever to look at it, I don't want you to feel like, and I'm speaking probably more to you, Judge, than anybody, I don't want you to feel like you're obligated to bless this thing today. And certainly, it's not even set for action. So I would want the court to feel comfortable that this is, this stands to be your policy and you should own it and you should know every detail of it. And if there's anything that you have a question about, certainly give the auditor's office time or my office time to get you an appropriate response.
Sure. Thank you. I do have a couple of questions just to... I have one question. Is this a legal requirement for us to have?
I hope not.
We haven't had.
We haven't had it.
Right. I noticed there was distinction in one of the codes if your county's between 41,000 and 42,000 or something like that. It was a very, two specific numbers. And it said at that point, the auditor will be the county's purchasing agent. I'm going, well, what about all of the county's population below that, county's population above that?
Right. And you know how those things work. Have you ever been to the Capitol and seen whether they call themselves lobbyists or whether they're official lobbyists or not, that there are many times that a bill gets bracketed, and that's what that is, bracketed specifically to a county. And so some county said, by God, that we want it to be this way. And the legislature, the legislative council said, how can we bracket this to make it specific only? When you sometimes see, you know, a county that's bordered by two rivers, one is the Brazos. I mean, just crazy stuff. And you know what it is and doesn't make much sense why they don't just say, unless you're Brazos County. I mean, one would think that that would be acceptable. But anyway, I hear what you're saying. It just, that was intentional by the legislature for one county and clearly wasn't ours.
Right, because we don't meet that threshold above Oberloch.
Judge, I was under the impression that at some point prior to me coming to the county that the previous judge and the previous auditor before Mary, they had established something to where the auditor's office would assume their role as the purchasing agent, meaning that we would just kind of oversee. It's not taking away the purchasing authority from each individual department. That each elected official and department head is still, even with this policy, will be in control of purchasing their own stuff. This just gives them a little more guidelines to follow. The purchasing policy is needed, one for our grants. A lot of the times when we get grants, they require us to have an adopted purchasing policy. And we haven't had one yet. So that's one of the main pushes because of our grant funding. And two, I was also under the impression that if we don't have some type of purchasing policy for Grimes County, that we are supposed to follow the state of Texas procurement policy, which we don't want to do that.
It's no fun.
No. It's a lot more rules and regulations than what this one has.
From your perspective, because one of the questions I had, if we adopted this policy and procedures outline or something very close and similar to it, is it going to slow the business of the county down on the day-to-day?
It's not going to slow the business down day-to-day. We had the sheriff's office in on a lot of the discussions and stuff and Roden Bridge, the two departments who do the majority of the purchasing. And so we were able to tweak it a little bit to accommodate them. Of course, you're going to have instances and, you know, exemptions come up that you're not going to be able to, you know, specifically follow this to the T. And those we would have to approach at that time. But we feel if Roden Bridge and the sheriff's office can comply with what we have in here, then the rest of the county could as well.
Okay.
And Judge, I think I've said to you, but I don't remember what the policy, well, maybe it was abatements. But this is similar, in my mind, similar to subdivision regulations, similar to your guidelines on abatements, et cetera. If it's your policy and you adopt it today, you can modify it tomorrow. And so it's a refining process of figuring out where things work or don't work. And then you can fix those when you run up against them. So I'm not in any way saying that I want you to hold this thing up for a month or so and because you're worried about the long-term effects of some particular issue. And, you know, it's pretty broad and it follows the law as far as everything I've looked at. And now your concern I have about the threshold for 50,000, about following competitive bidding requirements, that even sets forth the threshold for Roden Bridge, which for whatever reason still continues to be 25,000. I asked, contacted our legislator last session and asked whether or not he might be interested in making a change for counties. I didn't get any significant response. Maybe if we have someone who's elected from Grimes County in the near future, maybe we can get that changed. Certainly will be a request of mine.
It would require your vote, but...
Anyway, all of that to say to you, I don't want you to panic that if you can't foresee every long-term effect here, it's yours. You own it and you have the ability to change it as soon as you identify something that may be problematic.
I appreciate those comments. Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? I mean, it's only 29 pages long, but that does include a couple of form examples.
It also combines the credit card policy, which is currently in our personnel manual. So if and when you guys approve it, then this would, you know, take over the one that's in the personnel policy.
Is the current credit card policy being followed fairly closely or is it fairly free-form at the moment?
Yes, free-form.
Okay. And if it's free-form, issues and concerns with that are?
Well, we have some people that don't come to the auditor's office and then we have a problem getting receipts when they use their card. And Heather's stack from Citibank is about like this. And when we don't get receipts, then we have to have other paperwork taken care of. So sometimes it can be a hassle, but it's gotten better. It's gotten better.
Well, if we don't get receipts, can't we do payroll deduction on the employee until we get the receipts?
Kind of going to go down that road.
Okay. Just a thought for consideration.
Yeah, you sound like a big talker from this place.
Attorney.
Is that in his policy?
So if, all right, so on the credit cards, if we had closer attention to what the policy was, at the end of the day, you feel like the auditors or your office would be better, have a better understanding of the expenditures? Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And certainly, if we're spending tax dollars, we need to have that better understanding.
Yes, and with us trying to build a new building, you know, we just need to be more accountable for what we're spending these four, not just, you know.
Sure. Okay. Mrs. Coleman, anything additional that you'd like us to consider? No?
I think their office would ask that you consider expediting this matter.
Understood.
And I ask, because it was sent to me for review and I, to me, seemed like you all need an opportunity to look at it because you're being asked to approve of it. I have had this conversation with you, Judge, here recently that I used to watch where commissioners were afraid to appear that they didn't know anything and so they would just vote thumb up or thumb down so that they didn't look like, and I mean this in the true sense of the term, that they weren't ignorant or aware of what the issues were. I would not want to put any of you in that position that, I would want you to feel comfortable that no one should expect you to know all of this at this moment.
Right.
I mean, maybe you stayed up the last three days or four days and read it, but...
Only two of them.
Yeah. I don't want, I don't want you to feel like you have to do it, but at the same time, I don't want you to put it off until 2019 either. So you and I have talked about the language that sometimes shows up where the agenda item says workshop. And people from the community oftentimes expect that to be where there'll be no action. That's not a part of the government code. The term workshop doesn't show up in the government code. It's just a term that we've used oftentimes to say, hey, there may be a round table in the middle of the room and the five people instead of sitting up on the dice may be sitting at the table. You can set it for a workshop. You can set it on a regular meeting. You can set it however you want to. But I would suggest that you put it back on agenda in the near future for action. Maybe now with the expectation that everybody on the court has had an opportunity and knows where this thing is headed. If you wanted to, you could sit down and go through page by page and say, you know, let's read this. Do we have any problems? Let's read this. Do we have any problems? I don't know that that's necessary and you handle it how you want to. This is your court. And let's say you, the five of you, it's your court and this is your policy. So you do it any way you want to, but I would suggest putting it back on agenda in the near future. Now, of course, we have the fact that Commissioner Walker's not here, so somebody needs to convey to her what the court, I think, intends to do on the next agenda so that she's not blindsided. And that may be the first time that she has to discuss this with you all.
I'll take responsibility for making sure she's aware on that.
And just so y'all know, we didn't just kind of draft this off our own. We looked at some of other counties around us, like Ellis County, Washington County. The two previous procurement manuals that were drafted by Grimes County that never got pushed through. And we took bits and pieces and designed it to where the group of us that met felt that it would best benefit the county's needs with our population and what type of purchasing that we do.
And there were eight individuals in that group.
And I thank the treasurer's office and the auditor's office for visiting with me last week, kind of bringing me up to speed. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
This might be a little nitpicking, but maybe you can answer it. Since Grimes County, of course, is a government entity and they're exempt from sales tax. When you go to a service station to buy fuel, there is a state sales tax on fuel. If you go to a motel, there's a motel tax. How do you handle that? I mean, if you just...
With a motel tax, you can't do anything about that.
Yeah, we can't do anything about that.
But the service stations, they have the first option to go to the sheriff's office and get their fuel there.
There's a comm data card that we can get for the people who have a need to fuel their vehicles at local service stations to where the tax is already taken out and we get a discount. One of the reasons with the credit card is everybody's using their credit card at Annie's or whatever and we are being taxed on the fuel instead of going to our bulk fuel and getting what we've already got as a discount. However, if those people who have a need for using the county credit card to get fuel, they can get a comm data card and it's going to save the county money because it's going to take the tax out and we get a discount rate.
Give them a comm data card on the grounds that you need your Citibank card.
But can I ask you a question? Who is it that's getting fuel? Most people are just giving you the reimbursement number so they can be reimbursed for their expenditure, right?
Using a lot of, there's a lot of county credit cards used to buy fuel.
Yes, a lot. And we've had some reimbursements too that have come through that was paying individuals. And that individual actually should have gotten a 1099 from the county, but with that being done, we were not able to give the individual a 1099 for IRS purposes. So there's a lot of different scenarios that they discussed in the meeting and stuff.
And Judge, you know, there's a reimbursement rate that's modified on a yearly basis, but it's part of the personnel policy is that this is a reimbursement rate for your use of mileage for business purposes or county purposes. So not really sure when that practice began.
Okay.
The fuel that's being charged on the credit cards is this fuel that's being used in county vehicles. So it's not like individual people going and using a county credit card to fill up their personal vehicle. When people travel on their personal vehicles, it's my understanding that they do do the travel reimbursement at the .535 for their use of their personal vehicle. So this is individual employees who have county vehicles issued to them and they're using the county credit card to fuel those vehicles.
So it'll be more Roden Bridge, Sheriff's Department vehicles like that most likely?
Yeah, crimes victims, you know, juvenile probation. Anybody that has a county vehicle has at some point in time turned in fuel receipts for their county credit card.
Okay.
I've seen a number of those credit card charges at convenience stores and what have you in the list of claims here that, you know, that purchased fuel at these, one, at convenience stores.
And when they buy that, we have no choice but to pay the sales tax on that fuel because of the way that that's set up. Where if they use the bulk fuel at our fuel tanks or if they use that comm data card, then we would be exempt from those sales taxes and get the discount rate. Which is another reason why we want to push the purchasing manual because it covers a lot of those little topics, a lot of these little things and purchases that are coming up that we see issue with or could potentially be a problem. This purchasing manual would, you know, pretty much stop a lot of those type of purchases unless it was an absolute emergency purchase. It's kind of one of those things where we want to be proactive instead of reactive when the state comes in and starts auditing us.
Sure.
Do we want to have a workshop or are we going to get this on the agenda before January 1st?
Well, we're not going to.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, it was just a like to have it done, just to make things simpler. We will, after, if it's approved by the court, you know, our office and the treasurer's office is willing to sit down and have an open workshop with all the department heads and go over everything with them and I guess kind of tell them what our expectations are for each office when they start purchasing according to the policy.
Yeah, I don't think we need a workshop on, do the policy.
No, matter of fact, we received this last week and I've gone through it. And I'm sure y'all had an opportunity as well. And I was to suggest that if you have any questions, maybe we either go to the judge at auditor or treasurer's department and address those questions. And if not, we put it on the agenda and approve it next week.
For next week?
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
That's my opinion. Well, we don't, we don't need a motion to do that.
I don't think we need a motion to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Well, you just, it wouldn't hurt her feelings for you to tell her what you wanted to say and when you want it to happen.
Then we're going to table this item today and we will put it on an agenda in the very near future, possibly for next Wednesday, to take action on this procedure.
Right. So instead of reviewing the discussion, we're just considering take action?
Yes, sir. I like the way you said that.
You bet.
We good with that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mrs. Coleman, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Foltz, thank you. All right. Moving to Roden Bridge, Mr. Harry Walker, number eight. Consider and take action to approve a water line installation for Wixon Creek's subdivision on, that is, is that for subdivision, S U D?
Special Utilities.
Special Utilities District on CR 162. And authorize the county judge a signatory and we do have an attachment number eight to look at.
Good morning again, morning, and happy weekend for Christmas.
Thank you.
This is a water service line installation for Wixon Creek to provide service to a house on County Road 162 just west of 244. This is a voltage line, non-specific, first place of fire hydrant. Everything's in order and we're demanding approval.
Which commissioner's district is this in? Yours? Okay. Mr. Walker, is there a reason that they wouldn't want to put a line in that would take care of a fire hydrant or is that just...
It depends on the situation. In this case, the line they're coming off of is not adequate.
Oh, okay.
It's literally just a house service, a single house. Where they have larger lines, which typically has to be at least a six-inch line, then they'll put in hydrants if they're extending that line. And sometimes we assist them with that. We have a small item in the budget to help with that in occasion. But most of what we get are situations like this where it's just a single house service and typically an inch or inch and a half line and just not adequate.
What is the minimum size for a fire hydrant?
Six inches, standard.
I wonder if that's a minimum?
Pretty much. And even that, sometimes may not be enough. It depends on the actual, you almost need a loop a lot of times with a six-inch.
Yeah, they're, the state has regulations on a, on a six-inch line. They're supposed to actually be supported on both ends by an eight-inch line. If it's a mid-end line, it should be an eight inch. And we just don't have that many of those in the county. Now, they're, that doesn't mean I haven't seen fire hydrants on smaller lines. They make that piece, two and a half inch hydrants and things, but they're not very common.
I move to approve a water line installation for Wixon Creek, S U D, on County Road 162. And authorize the county judge a signatory.
I second the motion.
Commissioner Mallett has met a motion. It has been seconded by Commissioner Dobieinsky. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Walker, your Roden Bridge report?
Trees have been continuing to work through the weather, putting rock out when we can get dry rock. When we can't, we've been doing colored installations, some bridge works, some tree removals, things like that that aren't as affected by the weather. The Green Hall's primarily been doing digouts because the ditch dirt has just been too wet to handle. It's been a problem. We're still on hold on our project on 201. Again, because of the weather, we need a little bit drier, warmer conditions to finish that up. They are up to 42 miles of ditch work with the side ditch machine so far this year. That machine is able to continue to work in these kind of conditions a little better. It's actually easier on the equipment. Also, we did inspections, another inspection of Center Point on their roads on the southern part of the county and have submitted a damage adjustment of just over $99,000 to them. They indicated they're going to try and get that resolved before the end of the year for accounting purposes.
Are they pretty easy to deal with in that respect or...
They have gotten to be pretty good. They've been through the process a few times now and have got a pretty good working relationship with them at this point.
Good. Okay.
They are rapidly closing in on the end of that project. They expect to be finished first quarter of next year. They've pulled lines in many areas. It's coming to an end. And we'll try and make sure we get all damaged planes into them before they're out town, basically.
Did we include 211 in that? Not 2, 311?
Did we include two eleven in that? Not two, three eleven, three eleven?
Three eleven.
There was, there were some potholes in there.
We did go look at three eleven.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
There were some holes that they put in there with the concrete trucks when they were running.
Right, right. We did go look at that one. That was actually on a previous inspection, but it was on the list.
Okay.
I noticed on four oh five, they put some rock and most of the rock we've been putting out is, it's all come from that near Casi up there anyway.
Right.
And most of what we're putting out is about the color of this laminate on this table, but there were some that they put out as almost a gray or bluish color. It must have hit a different strata. And I thought when it, when I went across it after it got installed, it looked pretty good, but then after this slow, sloping rain we had a couple, about a week ago, it turned to mush and had ruts in it about this deep. I just wondered if that's a, a different type of rock or if we're still testing it.
The gray rock is what we're getting from cross. That's the gray fiber rock. We have had some, it's been well received. The guys like it because it is a smaller gradation. We have had a couple of issues where when it went down a little too wet, it's gotten slick. So we're trying, again, that's part of the, just managing the operations. We're not putting out rock that's wet to begin with. We're gonna continue to monitor it. If we aren't satisfied with the performance, we'll go back to the Connor truck.
If slow soaking rains, it wasn't real bad for them anyway. It soaks down in there and then it just turns to mush.
Yeah, and that's not the first location we've had that come in on, so we're looking into that.
Might want to test it once in a while.
Just to finish up with the board, we also recently did an inspection of Cross Texas on their roads, on the, their portion of the project, TransMaine project in the north end of the county. We have reached an agreement with them on about two hundred and forty thousand dollars in damages, which they've indicated they'll be sending in a check in January. And they are also closing in on the end of their project as well.
When, when we get a check like that, does that go back into your Roden Bridge fund? Okay.
A special line item, the auditor's office has set up a special line item.
There's a separate line item for each of those projects that'll go back into.
Good, okay.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The total that we've received thus far from Center Point's been about four hundred and ninety-two thousand, not including the ninety-nine thousand that it just mentioned. And with this, two hundred and forty from Cross Texas is gonna be over three quarters of a million dollars that we've gotten from those two companies with this project.
Have a little bit of help.
That's true.
And Judge, as a bookkeeping matter, usually the money is received into the general fund and then there's an amendment to push it back to that category.
Okay.
Sometimes that comes up, sometimes it doesn't. There was an issue years and years ago that sheriff was having people, was keeping federal inmates for the government and there was a question of the money was coming in, so it was a way to make money for the county, but the money was coming into the general fund and there was a question of whether it would go back to the sheriff's office became a problem. I don't see any problem here, but I just wanted to tell you that as far as bookkeeping's concerned, I think it comes back to the general fund before it then is moved by amendment back into the line. Right?
At Roden Bridge, it's put into the Roden Bridge Fund and then, yes, and then a budget amendment will appear because it's new money that we did not budget for.
Right.
And so we would increase the income and increase the expenditures.
So this little voice behind me is telling me that it goes into the Roden Bridge General Fund.
Right.
The general fund.
Okay.
And then it's pushed by amendment to the line item we're talking about.
Okay.
Just wanted you to hear that so that when you saw it as a budget amendment, it's just a bookkeeping.
Yeah.
I usually say that's for the bean counters and so the bean counters can count the beans however they want to.
Well, it sounded like Mr. Walker would be the rightful owner of those monies once they do indeed come in to replenish what you're having to pay.
Yeah, it's the people of Grimes County.
Well, rightful owner of that budget, okay. All right, thank you. I thank you to the little voice behind me. Okay, let's move on to agenda item number nine, consider and take action regarding the burn ban and authorize the county judge a signatory. I will admit, I haven't called any of the chiefs. I just went by the current weather conditions and I feel like we're probably in good shape for the time being, particularly with the, I almost said the Fourth of July, with the New Year's celebration time of fireworks and so forth. I don't think we should have a problem. Okay?
It may not be able to light.
Yeah, well, that, that, that works, okay. Number ten, receive update on the strategic plan. One thing that was, that is on this strategic plan that I hope everybody's becoming aware of is the new Grimes County website is now live, although it was dead this morning. I think along with the email, but we're trying to resurrect it back to life. And if you haven't been on the new website, I encourage you to do so. And also, if you want to watch any of the previous court proceedings since we've been recording, that's available for you to, for your morning enjoyment, not necessarily during work hours, but you know, when you're home and have nothing to do, you might want to bring it up and see what was said and how it was responded to. Has anybody looked at it and you have any comments on it?
I've seen it. Is it live? The, the commissioners' court meetings, are they live or are they just recorded?
We're just recording.
Yes, and you go back.
Right. But it's very, it's very easy to do. You just click, click and you're, you're there. So I think the, the time and the energy that the county has spent on that has been well worth it thus far. Number eleven, consider and take, I'm sorry?
Let me give an update.
Sure.
On the animal shelter.
Okay.
Rescue shelter. We are moving forward in the process of developing a five oh one three C and hopefully we'll have that within the next month. And when we do that, we'll start talking to some architects to design some plan for the facility.
Okay. Are we pretty well committed to where that's going to be over at the sheriff's department?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. Item number eleven, consider and take action to appoint Jay Gerard Patel and William P. Thomas to serve and fill the two expiring terms as Grimes County Representatives on the Blue Bonnet G C D Board of Directors, each serving a four-year term to expire in January twenty twenty-two. Commissioner, just so you know, those are the two incumbents that are currently serving and they have been talked to and both are willing to continue serving that capacity. Jared serves as representative for the industrial interests on that board and Bill Thomas, he serves as the, on the agricultural interest on that board. It is a four-year term. Both have been talked with, and specifically they were talked to by Zach Holland, who's the general manager over at Blue Bonnet G C D, so.
There are no questions. I move to appoint Jared Patu and William P. Thomas to serve and fill the two expiring terms as Grimes County Representatives on the Blue Bonnet C C D, G C D Board of Directors, each serving a four-year term to expire in January two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second.
Okay. Commissioner Dobieinsky has made a motion and Commissioner Husfeld has seconded that emotion, that motion. Are there any, any discussion?
Only thing I'd like to mention, I talked to Mr. Thomas the other day and I asked him the question, you know, exactly what do y'all do? And he's a member of a board that I think is comprised of about four or five surrounding counties and they monitor the water uses within the county to maintain the water level.
Right.
Or the water table. And they report back to the state and they monitor mostly, you know, like irrigation, large uses of irrigations and large water wells. And they monitor this and then they report it back to the state. So that's what they do.
Yeah, what, what little I know about is that G C D is a groundwater conservation district and that is that I don't know if all counties, but I think all counties are in some conservation district and it has to do with management of water becomes, because that's become a greater concern over the last, you know, ten or twenty years.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number twelve, consider and take action to clarify and approve new pay grade level P T S O three, attachment number twelve. Lucy, do you want to have any comments on this as to why we?
It's in regards to a part-time bailiff.
Right.
And, you know, he falls underneath the sheriff's department. He was a deputy. So we didn't know exactly where to classify this one. So we, you know, Jesse came up with the P T S O three, put it underneath the sheriff's department classification. Jesse, can you say anything else, sir?
Well, it didn't solely just follow me on.
No, no.
Where that came from, but after speaking.
Yeah, I messed it up first and you straightened it out. So tell them, tell them how you straightened it out.
We just, I think we were all in agreeance that this particular part-time was gonna have to be certi, is that correct? He has to be certified and have all the same certifications as all of the patrol deputies. And so after speaking with you, Judge, and Constable Jarvis and H R, we felt like it should have its own separate category and the great definitions. And so we did come up with the P T S O three. The pay range would be the same as a patrol deputy. He would not, because he's part-time, he would not receive the benefits of insurance or any of that. But I believe Constable Jarvis would, feels like he should be compensated fairly and that would be the same as the patrol deputies, is that correct?
That's true, yeah. So paid at the same level as someone who's full-time doing that same or similar job. But we just put the P T part-time designation in there.
But there's an issue also with the pay. There's not enough pay in my budget to cover this.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So I don't know, when you talk about that.
There was only fourteen thousand nine ninety-six eighty I'm budgeting in his line item. And we, because during budget time, it kind of just came up at the last minute with this county court at law.
Right.
And he wasn't gonna be able to bailiff and do his other, you know, all of his other duties. So we just kind of, we put a number in there and it was fourteen dollars and forty-two cents.
Per hour, correct.
Budgeted for ten, right, per hour for a thousand and forty hours. And if he is, if he's able to hire this under, if y'all do approve this P T S O three, that gives him the flexibility of hiring him in at nineteen dollars an hour, which is what he's wanting to do. That would only allow seven hundred and eighty-nine hours for the whole year. So if you do approve this, then we also need to discuss the budget.
Correct.
But it's, but it's not on the agenda, so I would say do a budget amendment later.
Can we talk?
I know, yeah, you can talk about it, but I, I think I've told Constable Jarvis, just, just feed a little bit to the commissioners' court at a time. If you get this approved, then you'll come back with a budget amendment later. But I would tell you that, that his office does a great job and you would hear the same from any judge of a court for which they serve as bailiffs. And they're dependable and reliable and I, I think it's a, it's a expense and a classification is warranted, so that's my take.
Also, we don't do just county court law. We cover A G courts and John's Court, C P S courts.
Correct.
On top of the county court law. So if you look in the budget calendar, I mean, the calendar for the courts, it starts ramping up with the county court law. The first month in January is about ten county court law hearings. And then I think if you look in further on in February and March, it jumps up to almost fifteen.
Right.
And.
And the color-coded calendar you have in, in front of you kind of is designed to help you visually see how many county courts of law we now have established. So I can understand back in October or late September when we were just kind of, this seems like a good number and a good pay range and.
And some of these get canceled at the last minute. Some of them get postponed. So there's no way to actually judge how long court's gonna last and what kind of court. And my deputy constable is only doing bailiff in court. He's not serving papers, doing my job. He's only covering the courts, county court law, A G court and C P S court.
And if your intention to meet compliance with the amount of time he's been off, then you're bringing him on board next week?
He's actually been working for free for the county from October first until present because he retired from the S O. I picked him up. He's a reserve officer. T C D R S, our retirement system says, hey, you gotta stay away from the county for thirty days. But Grimes County has a policy that states you gotta stay away for ninety days. So he's actually been working two, three days a week for free since October first to present.
Is he interested in continuing that?
Well, I'll let you talk to him about that.
That'd hurt to ask.
And just so we're clear, if a court gets canceled, you're not having him sit around doing this job.
No, correct.
He's just not working, right?
Correct. He's gonna go home. So we figured twenty-nine dollars, I mean, twenty-nine hours a week, the nineteen dollars an hour figure, but I guess we gotta come back to talk about the budget amendment for the extra money.
Well, what we do have on the agenda is to consider and take action on approving the new pay grade level, the P T S O three. And then we'll come back and, under advice of attorney, we'll let you.
And I would say it'll show up as a budget amendment.
Right.
And oftentimes, unless the members of the court have questions, it's part of that consent agenda and it just.
Goes right on.
Gets done. And so I don't know that he'll need to come back and say anything now that you're aware this budget amendment's going to show up, if you approve this item.
Any additional questions on this or?
Well, my question, what's the range, Jesse, on that, the new three that y'all have?
It's seventeen to nineteen eighty. And he's not eligible for the tenure, the twenty-one that shows up on there because he's.
The nineteen dollars an hour is why I figured that is, one is he's not getting certificate pay. Certificate pay for the other officers is equal about seventeen percent an hour. So our current, our current courthouse security is making like eighteen, twenty an hour. So I figure nineteen is probably should be a good number for him.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Constable Jarvis.
Okay.
And I assume all of you have, are aware, and I just want to be sure this is clear, it wasn't clear to me at first, courthouse security is different than a bailiff. The courthouse security person stays outside the courtroom, the bailiff is inside the courtroom. And given the concerns that exist in today's world, I think it's certainly appropriate that we continue to have those folks in those designated areas.
Agreed.
And this money or this line item or this budget comes out of the sheriff's office's budget, right? It's not in.
It's in Constable's.
It's in the Constable's budget.
So this line item wouldn't be in the, like, county court of laws budget?
No, no.
I currently have fifteen thousand in my budget for bailiff.
Yeah.
But fifteen thousand's not gonna carry me out through our new budget year. I'm gonna run out somewhere around by June.
His line item is the four, 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 one, twenty. And that's where it's currently budgeted.
Any further discussion?
I move to approve the new pay grade level P T S O three, second motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobieinsky, to approve the new pay grade level P T S O three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Item thirteen, consider and take action to correct, clarify, or amend the budget of the county judge. It is expected that the court will conduct a closed session as authorized by Texas Government Code, five five one point. It is expected that the court will conduct a closed session as authorized by Texas Government Code, five five one point oh seven four Personnel Matters. So we're going to ask those, uh, that are in the.
Judge, before you do, before you do.
We don't have to?
Well, before you do that, I was asked this question, this was a, a late addition to the agenda. If it's a discussion of the budget only, then that should be done in open session. If it's a discussion of, let's say, uh, reprimand or duties or complaint, uh, official, then that can be done in a closed session.
Okay.
And the official has the right to demand that it be open. Uh, if this is solely about the budget, though, my preference would be we don't go in a closed session to have that discussion.
That's also my preference.
All right.
Okay. So we'll keep it open?
Yes. There, there, there was, let me, uh, clarify why I asked to put the, the closed session in there.
Mm-hmm.
There was a question as to whether or not we had put that in the, in the budget, and I wanted to make sure that we, if we needed to go in the closed session to discuss that, that we did that. But, and, and I, I didn't get to talk to, uh, John and Jesse the other day before they left, and John called me back and we didn't get to talk. This morning I found out the money is already in the budget for the salary, and that was a question that came up, whether or not we had that in there, because Judge Lamond did not accept salary.
Right.
And so, uh, that's, that's why that was put in there. Yes.
But sixty-one hundred of it, y'all, the court approved and moved to Roden Bridge, just want to make sure that you're aware of that.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So where do we go from here?
Well, and so that we're, uh, I've just put the gorilla out there. My understanding is the question is if the budget originally said the county judge is to receive a certain amount of income, and the previous county judge said, I will waive a portion of that income, where do we stand with new county judge and that particular piece of the income?
And the new county judge during his interview with commissioner said he was not in a financial position to waive that portion of the salary.
I understand. Um, I'm not aware of any authority that's out there on this, although I would tell you if the original amount budgeted for compensation for an elected official was the reduced amount, it would be somewhat problematic to change that now. Uh, you can't, you cannot tinker with an elected official's, uh, salary during the year, because there are certain notice requirements that go out, especially if there's an increase, um, that has to be, and, published in the paper.
Mm-hmm.
There's a decrease, you got the salary grievance committee notice issued, et cetera. As long as the original budget set the right amount, or set the amount that we're talking about, seems to me that the other moving of the dollars, if you will, was an amendment made in the year, maybe even considered a line item transfer, I guess from one office to another, maybe it was considered an amendment. Um, you have the ability to, I think, make the same type of amendment to undo the waiver of the moving of the dollars. My understanding, and I'm just telling you my understanding, is that the budgeted amount was the amount that you're asking, uh, that the total compensation equal, right?
Correct.
It's no more, no less than what was originally budgeted.
Correct.
That's my thought on it, it's a matter of bookkeeping, and the court has the authority to move the dollars away and move the dollars back if the budget amounts not, or the original, originally budgeted amount is the amount that we're talking about, trying to come up to the level of. That's, uh, that's the best I got for you.
So Ms. Murphy, would you tell the court what is the appropriate way to handle this on the books?
Um, well, I don't. John? I don't think that we would have to take that money back from Roden Bridge, we can just do a budget amendment pulling from fund balance out of general.
I don't disagree.
Okay.
Okay.
So it would just be, the thirty thousand, the thirty-four hundred is still in there, and so we would prepare a, a budget amendment taking from fund balance for the sixty-one hundred, and then we would just move that money, line item transferred that many up into your salary line. Because when, um, the previous judge and the county attorney waived their portion, we went ahead and separated them out, so it would be transparent to the public.
Okay.
And so, yes.
And one of, yeah, and I, I wanted to agree that there, when there's a waiver of funds, there, i- if you don't document the amount that's waived, you may do a disservice to the next person in the office because, uh, there may not be the same staff around who remembers what was waived and why it was waived and how it was waived, and so if you don't designate that that was what was done, then the next person may get, ju- just show a lower salary, you know?
Correct.
So if you don't show it in a wave box, then everybody says, well, I'm not sure how that number got different. But recall, a- and, and you may or may not recall this, Judge, and, and maybe even commissioners, there was a time not too long ago that almost every elected official had a different pay amount. Uh, almost everyone was different, and, and I don't know how we got, where we got to, except to say you did this three percent on some years of an increase, you know, call it a cost of living or whatever you want to, but some years a three percent, some year a one percent, some year, some other percentage, but everybody's number just went up uniformly, but they started somewhere years and years ago with a different number. Well, at some point, I think it was under Judge Shiflett, she said, why don't we make everybody the same? Now, this is gnashing of teeth, because people don't all agree that every elected official does the same amount, but, uh, essentially that's what happened that year, is she said everybody, she said, as, as the budget officer, as the chief budget officer with the assistance of the archer's office, let's set everybody at the same level. Well, now, if, let's say Judge Lamond waived six thousand dollars and you, and everyone else is at fifty or whatever the number is, fifty thousand, and your number or the county judge's position shows forty-four, but there's no box that says waived, then the next group of folks who show up on scene may say, well, that's just the way the county judge is set up to be, six thousand dollars less than everybody on the court. So the point was set a waiver box, so despite whatever continuity issues may exist, everyone would have some recollection from year to year, and God knows, I don't remember what I had for lunch yesterday, so to have some continuity as to what we did in the previous budget year, uh, the archer's office put that box of waived, and, uh, it seems to me as long as the understanding was that you were budgeted or your salary was budgeted to be the same as everyone else's, or plus, I guess he lost the, or your office lost the benefit of that supplement when the judicial duties were to go away.
Correct.
Uh, as long as it's the same with the, uh, it's not the travel allowance number, as long as that all is still the same total as what was budgeted, I think we're okay.
I just might understand that's correct.
I do have one question.
Ask away. We'll see if we can get an answer.
Right. So, the way we would have figured it is, um, we would have taken the two, the salary line and the portion weight, added it together and, um, divided it by twenty-six, and that would give you his salaried amount every paycheck. He's not due the whole nine thousand because he started, his begin date was, is that correct? I just wanted to ensure that we don't.
I think it would be pro-rata.
Yes.
Right.
Thank you.
I think my start date's December eighteenth according to what Lucy told me.
So we will owe you for this, this coming paycheck because we had the old rate in there.
Let's call it a merit raise and let's wait and see how it does.
Appreciate it. So is the, is the wording we have here acceptable?
Uh, it was my wording, so yes.
I, I knew it was, that's why I asked you.
It's fine, the question is, what is the, what do the bean counters need to hear from you all to make it okay for them to put the number back over there? And I don't know if it's clarify, correct, or amend, I put all those in there so that you could choose the best one. But it doesn't matter to me, I, I know, bookkeeping is beyond me, so it's whatever they need.
Well, I think we tried to clarify, and it wasn't an error to begin with, so just amend the budget. Okay, consider and take action to amend the budget of the county judge.
Got a motion.
Any discussion, all right, I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a second. Okay, County Judge Joe Fouth made the motion, it is seconded by Commissioner Dobieinsky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
And Judge, I assume that what you're saying is to return the waived amount, and that's all we're.
That's correct. That's correct.
And I'd ask that the minutes reflect that, I assume that there's no objection by the members of the court.
All right. That will bring us to item number fourteen on the agenda.
I move to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn, second, David Dobieinsky, uh, Commissioner Mallett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.